...developed throughout the state and collect resources that have significance to Maine. All of this is outlined in statute, but as is the case with many of the organizations you come to know and understand, the Maine State Library is so much more than that. We represent partnerships and collaboration, research and innovation, literacy initiatives, and statewide impact, even national impact, and we seek to make access to and delivery of millions of resources available to the people of Maine. Just as an aside before I get into some other testimony, all of you should know that your badges are set to access the Maine State Library beginning at seven o'clock in the morning, so if you need reading space, quiet space, or access to any one of the main printed newspapers, we have the news note, please come over and be our guest. We also have great technical resources available for you too. So who are we and what do we do? We're 44 people, great people, who work hard and tirelessly to deliver world-class library services. Our staff, 36 percent, have master's degrees in library and information science, and this is important because it underscores the professionalism that we bring to all that we do. Neil Gaiman, who is a famous young adult author, could probably pack a couple of stadiums here in Maine in seconds until his tickets sell out so quick. He likes to say, "Google can bring you millions of answers. A librarian can bring you the right one." The Maine State Library has nearly 400,000 items in its collection, over 20,000 rolls of microfilm. We carry newspapers from all Maine towns, and we see ourselves as being the repository for all things Maine. We collect state agency publications, state documents. We deliver services to those who live in towns with no library service, offer library services to the blind and visually impaired, and that's through a Library of Congress National Library Service Program. We utilize federal funds to help develop libraries throughout the state through our library development program. Library development itself can take on all shades and incorporate numerous initiatives, but at its core, library development seeks to make libraries better by introducing them to continuing education opportunities, emerging technologies, and helping them by delivering basic core services like internet connectivity. In fact, the Maine State Library is a critical partner with a voice that resonates nationally to help bring and build stronger internet connectivity throughout Maine. Our work with the Network Maine Council, which is also part of the University of Maine system, and of which the Maine State Library is a board member, is helping to bring 100 megabit connectivity to libraries and schools throughout the state, and I'm sure all of you will be hearing more about that in the coming weeks and months. Our budget within the governor's budget proposal is sound, and it will enable the Maine State Library to continue to do great work. I personally thank the governor for his commitment, as demonstrated in this budget proposal, to keep the Maine State Library strong and vibrant. I thank all of you as well, because as you'll see as we go through just a few of these initiatives briefly, you've really helped to grow core services and back us when times hold rough, so thank you. The next part of the testimony aligns with the specific pages in the budget addendum, so beginning on A459, I've aligned the speaking points to coordinate with what you have in your budget packets. So the first account is library administration. This basically funds the Maine State Library imposition, but it also funds our central service center charges as well as some OIT charges. The only reason that you see an increase there is because the previous state librarian was an incredibly great partner. Everyone that knows Linda Lord knows how awesome she was, and she did not draw state retirement, because she had retirement from another source, so they're building it back into the budget as an administrative fund. So when you see that in personnel services, that's why. So we thank Linda for her service through all those years. The next line in the budget packet is the Maine Public Library Fund. This is a really unique fund. All of you, for those of you that were here a few sessions ago, voted and made this possible. We are one of seven organizations that individuals in Maine can donate to. I should say the Maine Public Library Fund is one of seven funds through the filing of Maine state income taxes. We are the only other state other than Hawaii that has a voluntary contribution for library fund through a service such as this, and since it was created just a couple of years ago, we've brought in nearly $50,000, and by surveying libraries in Maine throughout the state, we have turned that, we have purchased ebooks and audiobooks in the Maine Internet Download Library, of which hundreds of libraries are a part of. So that's what that fund represents. The numbers, the numbers are all over the place because we don't know what we're going to bring in, so when you see the line that's appropriated, it's simply a guess. This past year, we brought in $36,000, so we'll probably update that to reflect what we think we bring in next year, but that's a moving target. The Maine State Library is our primary account, the O217 account. It's our primary operating account. We have three new initiatives that I'll walk through quickly. The first, and I want to thank my good colleague Peter Merrill for assuming the sale. I'd like to go with actually a reading testimony and believe that this has happened, but we don't yet share the position with the museum and the archives. It's actually in our budget proposal for all of you to consider. We're asking for it. We hope that we get it. This is a really great initiative. It's a great example of collaboration between our three agencies, the museum, the archives, and the Maine State Library, because digitization efforts and cataloging efforts are really core to a lot of what we're trying to do. And the reason for that is we can bring our collections to the world. I mean, that's the simple reason. So many more people can access our collections. Two years ago, and this is an attachment that you'll see at the end of your document, a separate sheet, two years ago, you funded, you funded an initiative to bring a digital state documents repository for the Maine State Library that has grown significantly. We heard, we heard you when you gave us the funds, you trusted us, and we have grown that. So this position will help us to grow that further. Part of going beyond the state documents digital effort are broader digitization efforts. We are, we were just recently chosen, I guess is the best word, to be a Digital Public Library of America service hub. The Digital Public Library of America essentially collects digital records from around the nation and displays them for people to find. They do not house the digital files, so when someone goes to the Digital Public Library of America and searches for a Maine map or some Maine digital artifact, when they find it, they will be passed back through to the local organization here in Maine that holds that. The Maine State Library will serve as a service hub to collect those digital records, forward them on to the Digital Public Library of America, and help to make them much more accessible. So it's quite a unique initiative. There's usually only one service hub chosen per state. It's not always the state library, so we feel very honored to take on this role. We're currently working with the archives as well to digitize over 1,000 maps and put them in our collection, again, all with the intent of making them more successful. So the first initiative is to fund that librarian two position to keep these efforts going, again, a shared position to other agencies. The second initiative that you'll see there is funding for a librarian three position to focus on early childhood literacy efforts. This is in early childhood literacy consulting. It's a long story, and I won't get into it today, but Linda has shared it, the way this came to date. But through a partnership currently with DHHS, Maine Department of Health and Human Services, we were able to provide funding to bring someone in to work with librarians, childcaregivers, preschool teachers, parents, anyone that works with children in that spectrum of early childhood development. This is very unique. There are other states that have folks that work with childhood literacy and children at early stages, but no one has established the unique programming nationwide to work directly with caregivers, preschool providers. We have, and the person in this role has actually been asked to write some articles that will go out nationally about what we're doing here. Where this was funded through the Department of Health and Human Services, it's not guaranteed. We're asking for permanent funding to make this a reality. And I won't, I won't go through this, but if it comes up in your work session and you want to dive into this, some of what I've quoted in the testimony and the chart that goes into the following page of my testimony really underscores why it's so important to get to these children so early. It's very, very important in terms of vocabulary development, view of Maine. We could go on and on. This initiative is strongly supported by the governor, which was great. He was actually the impetus in saying, you know, what are we doing for kids? Libraries reach so many. The partnership with DHHS was great. We just want to make this a reality and keep it so it comes with him. The final initiative that you'll see in our large, in the, in our operating budget is $15,000 to help us build back our books and materials budget, which has decreased over time. It's a, it's a relatively modest amount in the grand scheme, although every penny helps, but we're really looking to help to diversify the collection in terms of digital materials as well as print materials. The final fund that you'll see in our, in the budget package is the statewide library information system account. It's 0185. This is basically for content resources such as Marvel. For those of you that have used Marvel, it's used by businesses and schools and citizens for all kinds of content, from Full Text, Consumer Report, Wall Street Journal, to Value Line, academic journals, on and on. It's, it's a great resource, something we couldn't purchase on our own, but just a contributor. So funds that come from the PUC and the Maine Technology Education Fund, Access Fund, university libraries contribute, private colleges and universities contribute, so it's a great, great resource for Maine. As you'll see, that's flat funded, but just so that we can still have our share contributed to that. So for many recent years and throughout the Maine State Library's history, you have entrusted us to do great things with the resources you appropriate, and we really appreciate that. It's in this tradition that these new initiatives will be carried out. They are important to Maine. We thank you for your support. And as one more visual, I'll be brief. Education and cultural affairs has seen this demonstration prior. What you're looking at is a tote that is the typical size tote, roughly 18 inches long, 14 inches high, 15 inches wide. That carries books through our interlibrary loan van delivery program, and I think many of you are familiar with that. You've added money to that in the last two bienniums. Interlibrary loan transports more than 1.6 million items a year throughout Maine libraries. It's a great way to share resources. So in this, in this tote, and this is more for the people listening, but you'll see the standard medium rate, flat rate priority mailbox through the U.S. Postal Service. It's about $12 to mail whatever you can fit into this one single box. And in our tote that carries books to libraries, there's five of these boxes, so roughly $60 in retail delivery service, but this one tote is $15 per stop, per stop. So we, the Maine State Library, we receive 12 to 15 totes every single day of the week for $15 each of those days. So it's a great, great resource. You entrusted us with a lot of money to put into the van delivery service. Libraries, local libraries, working on shoestring budgets that can only get one day of van delivery a week, that $15 is so valuable to them because they can get numerous books to share with their patrons, and it's a great example of efficient business practice at its best and a great resource for me. So thank you very much. I'll take any questions.
Senator Altona?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have a question on the initiatives that you talked about as far as the income tax checkoff.
Yes.
And now, is this one of the checkoffs that is going to be eliminated under the tax report proposal?
Oh, please don't say that.
No, I'm asking.
It very well could be. That I wasn't aware of. What I do know is that when it was added, there was significant conversation about who to add, what to add, why to add, do we even need this? So we were added to that, but if that list of organizations does in fact go, then I would have to say yes, we would be one of those, and it would, it would hurt. This is great, great funding that goes out to these libraries, so through a great mechanism.
So the follow-up then, my understanding is that those income tax checks off are going to be eliminated? I'm not sure if yours is or not, so maybe you could check on that.
I will, and I'll report back, but I was unaware of that, so thank you for...
If, if it is, will that impact this program?
So it will impact that budget line. It would in effect go away, would not allow, what's great about this, thousands of people can donate $5 very easily when they file their income taxes, so we can amass meaningful funds to go towards that. So yeah, that, that would go away.
And my follow-up question on that would be, on the van, you have the interlibrary loans. Now, does that also work through all of our state libraries, like the University of Maine and the University of Maine Law School? So it's not just local libraries?
That's, you're right.
It's all the universities?
Yes. So we do the contract, and it includes the entirety of the University of Maine system, the law library, it includes private colleges and universities in the state, Bode Bates Colby, as well as local libraries, and also organizations. For instance, and because you asked, this is good context, Cornerstones of Science, who is very involved with STEM and education, they have science kits that they send out to libraries. So Cornerstones is on the van delivery so that we can go and pick up these kits to get them to libraries. So that's a very unique situation. It's predominantly libraries, but resources that can get into libraries, we use the van deliveries as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Hope so.
Thank you, and welcome as our new state librarian.
Thank you.
The museum has Friends of the Maine State Museum. Is there a Friends of the Maine State Library? And I was pretty sure there was, and do they do, they do some fundraising and other kinds of work for you? Could you just describe how you do, you involve folks in that?
Sure. The Friends is actually a new organization as well, legislatively established maybe four years ago, and so it's new and off the ground. Most of their work has just been to help bring in some speakers for some programs. Their, I think their total funds right now are less than $5,000, so it's very small in that sense, but it also allows the Maine State Library, in working with the Friends, to submit grants that might not otherwise come in, and representative makers as well there, that we have a MyFive grant, MyFive, where we will be distributing and checking out through local libraries, basically portable internet in Washington County. That was done through a grant that has, the Friends is the fiscal agent, the Maine State Library is helping to make that happen.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, we are going to have the necessity of all the libraries, so we'll run right through, and from morning session right into afternoon sessions, so don't be afraid to get up and step out, the ground might be, just going to keep on, just to make sure we get through. So next up, Maine State Museum.
Good afternoon. I think I could say. Senators Hamper and Langley, Representatives Rotunda, Hornfield, members of the Joint Standing Committees on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Education and Cultural Affairs, Heimer Norr Fishman, Director of the Maine State Museum. I'm here this morning to describe those items relating to the Maine State Museum in the biennial budget proposed before you. You all, in a general way, know what the work at the Maine State Museum is, so I won't go into it in great detail. We make tangible and visible and educational our great pride in the state of Maine. I'll begin by jumping right into the budget and summarizing in advance our budget requests, which are fairly straightforward, but which may seem hard to track because of the inherent complexities of the budget structure. There are four requests. Two are self-funded staff reorganizations requiring no additional general fund support, one to improve educational services, and one to upgrade a curatorial position. The two initiatives for which funding is requested are, for the first one, to add 22 hours biweekly to an existing position to make it full-time, and for the second, which you've already heard some references to, to create a third of a full-time position in conjunction with two other state agencies, which will each support and manage their own portions of the position. Both these increments are for the purpose of improving collections care and documentation. The Part A request for the Maine State Museum can be found beginning on page A482 of the Bureau of the Budget Document. The Maine State Museum has three budget programs. The first budget program is listed in Maine State Museum 0180 and contains the baseline general fund budget for the museum's operations. The general fund includes personal services for the salaries and benefits of the museum's total staff of 19 full-time equivalent positions. These positions and $163,416 in all other operational funds for both years of the biennium allow the museum to carry out its basic legally mandated functions, which, to paraphrase the enabling legislation, require the museum to employ professional standards to assemble and protect tangible collections representing the proud heritage and environmental and cultural richness of the state, and to use those collections and other activities to further the cultural and especially the educational interests of the people of Maine. Those required operational functions include operational and financial administration, educational services for some 50,000 visitors annually, a program of exhibitions and related presentations, and collections care, management, research, and development for the 800,000 items in the museum's collections that preserve, import, and interpret Maine's natural and cultural past, by far the very largest collections that you've heard of spoken today. Additional core activities include exhibition development and related construction in the cultural building, State House, and Blaine House, educational tours and programs for 16,000 children annually, scheduling a school, home school, and general public tours for the museum, State House, and Blaine House, loans to other institutions, development and publication of education and research materials, and professional advice to Maine's scientific, historic, artistic, and community institutions. The Maine State Museum 0180 program also includes two other special revenue funds. One holds proceeds from the museum's publications endowed. The second provides funding for the functioning of the museum store. The museum store's entire operation, including its staff, is self-supporting, funded out of earned income from sale of books, mineral samples, educational materials, and Maine-related gifts that are available to visitors in order to expand and extend museum experience. Page A482 also lists three initiatives for the biennium, all within the general fund portion of the Maine State Museum 0180 program. The first provides funding to increase the hours of one museum specialist one position from 58 to 80 hours biweekly. That position is the museum's collection manager, who tracks stores and reports information about everything in the museum's vast collection. The important responsibilities of this job demand that be full-time. It oversees the physical care and much of the documentation of that 800,000 object collection I've already mentioned, and which constitutes one of the great treasures of our state. This for us, and I hope for Maine, is a priority need. Secondly, our budget proposal includes funding for a librarian two position and related all other expenses. That would be shared equally, as you've heard, among the museum, the Maine State Library, and the Maine State Archives. This innovative arrangement, which was conceived by the museum, would allow us and our sister agencies in the cultural building to have one position in common dedicated solely to providing cataloging, photographic, and digitization services for tens of thousands of valuable historical images in our combined collections. Through these services, our collections would become more available to the public in a systematic way, and in sharing this position, we would hope to demonstrate an excellent and innovative level of cooperation among the cultural agencies and a desire to demonstrate our support for thoughtful efficiencies in state government. To reiterate here, our budget includes one-third of this position that would be managed by the museum, with the other two-thirds funded within the budgets of the cooperating agencies. The final initiative for the Maine State Museum 0180 program reorganizes the education division to position it better to meet the demands of learners of all ages for educational programming related to the museum exhibitions and collections. This reorganization upgrades two museum specialist one positions to museum education specialist two positions, and upgrades and combines three part-time museum technician one positions to create one and a half museum education specialist one positions. The effect of these changes will be to create a higher level of responsibility for the department for the development and delivery of educational programs, and to better distinguish staff with those program development responsibilities from staff whose primary job is providing oversight, security, and in fact visitor services for the museum's welcome desk and its exhibition galleries. The support for this reorganization comes from the elimination of a single vacant part-time museum technician one position, as well as minimal additional funds from another museum program, Maine State Museum Operating Fund Z179, and so it is self-funded. Second budget program, the Maine State Museum Operating Fund Z179 program, shown on page A483, includes the other special revenue account that holds income from museum admissions. These revenues are estimated at $28,000 annually, an increase of $5,000 over the previous biennium, as shown in the first initiative, and that's just a financial adjustment to accord that figure more closely with our actual admissions income. These funds advance the museum's ability to provide public information, educational materials, and programs to enhance visitors' engagement in museum programs. With the proposed reorganization of the museum's education division that I've just described, a portion of this income will help fund the work of our staff, providing direct educational services to visitors, an action that is proposed in the second initiative under the Maine State Museum Operating Fund Z179 program. The museum's third budget program, Research and Collection Museum 0174, is shown on page A484. This program contains two accounts, both with all other allocations. One account holds all competitive federal grant awards secured by the museum. At present, we don't have any federal grants, but anticipate applying for at least one during the coming biennium. If successful, such a grant award will be received into and expended from this account. The second account in this program is shown as an other special revenue fund. This account with a proposed allocation of $163,238, in each year of the biennium, holds donations from individuals along with corporate and competitively awarded foundation grants that the museum receives to benefit specific activities and projects mainly educational and exhibit-oriented. This sole initiative here provides personal services allocation to upgrade a museum specialist two curatorial position to a museum specialist three. This reclassification will allow the curatorial position to take on greater responsibilities in collections management, development, and interpretation, as well as the oversight of a new privately funded program to facilitate disaster planning services in cultural institutions statewide. I will just mention as an aside that this year is the 50th anniversary of the museum's becoming an independent state agency under its own permission, even though it was begun 179 years ago. Thank you very much for your value and the long support of the museum and its work, and of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? For a second word?
Thank you very much. I noticed that one of the positions being eliminated is Phil Position Museum Tech One. What is the reason for the recommendation?
We needed to do that to self-fund the educational organization.
And what's going to happen to the person?
Sheila, would you come up and describe this?
It's a vacant position, we're excited about it, and we'll...
So there's one Phil position according to the chart, that there's a Phil position and a vacant position being both eliminated on April 12.
No, there's not a Phil position I don't believe. No, there's not a filled position I don't believe. I've seen this before, so I'm not quite sure, but as far as I know, we're only eliminating one part-time vacant museum technician.
Would you check that?
Absolutely, yes. I want to be...
Thank you.
May I ask?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And lastly, public broadcasting.
Thank you, Senator Hamper, Senator Langley, Representative Rotundo, Representative Hornfield. My name is Mark Vogel, saying, appreciate all members of the Joint Committee here today. I'm president and CEO of MPBN, and this is a chance to address and discuss a little bit of the funding and the programming work of Maine Public Broadcasting and to provide a brief overview of some of our strategic efforts. There are so many Mainers who are represented here. When I think about public broadcasting, the hundreds of thousands of viewers and listeners across the state who tune in each week, the nearly 50,000 annual donors who support the programming, their financial contributions, our 85 employees, and the 20 lay volunteer members of our board. First of all, I just want to talk about the administration's proposed appropriation of $1.25 million for each year for FY16 and '17. We're very appreciative of that. This represents a crucial 13% of the revenues needed to operate our network and our mandated broadcast towers that reach every county in the state. MPBN is the only statewide broadcaster, and as such is designated as the primary EAS source by the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, and the main association of broadcasters to distribute the EAS. The emergency alert system warnings are both at federal and state level, which we then in turn provide to and send on to every single commercial radio and TV station via our repeater network. The costs of operating and delivering signals to remote locations, which you all know well, from north to south, east to west, frankly, every single county in Maine are significant, about $2.7 million for just the broadcast section out of an annual budget of just under $12 million. We serve all the regional communities of Maine as a partner, like we always have, that remains both expensive and technically challenged to keep five television and seven radio stations, broadcast transmitters, and dozens of transmission links, operational and on the air every day. The dollars that come from the state are used for these purposes: electricity, fuel, maintenance, to keep these signals available to every Mainer. It's important to note that the programming costs for radio and television are exclusive of state monies and are supported by the listeners, the viewers, the underwriters, and federal dollars from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. So that's a little about the $1.5 million in this budget request. As you also know, for the past two legislative sessions, MPBN have provided the brand-new service called the Maine Capital Connection, our free over-the-air statewide TV channel dedicated to the State House covers and the work of this legislature. This committee, the Appropriations Room, of course, was the one that was on the most. And our board provided authorization to underwrite and launch the first two years of the Capital Connection with the hope that this could be a strong demonstration of a fee-for-service program. However, there was no funding available last year, and we simply had to pull the plug for this year. We put it on hold, and there have been discussions about how to pay for this and including active proposals, and we look forward to being part of finding a solution for that. Finally, in lieu of the time, I'll cut to the end of this and just remain committed that we are to serving all the people of Maine and connecting them in a variety of ways. We're focusing on continuing with Maine news, journalism, and public affairs content in more locations, more places across the state. We're launching new digital platforms and program services to meet the needs of current and future generations. And finally, we're continuing to work on building strong relationships with all of you as part of our statutory and historical connection to the state of Maine. We're appreciative of your commitment to MPBN as we face new technology and programming challenges, even as we set our sights on continuing to be a valuable asset for Maine, and in fact creating new ways to meet the public broadcasting needs of future generations of Maine systems. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Senator Rutter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. I have a question for Happy Field Appropriations. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, the connection with the signal and the cost of providing that service to the state. It's costing Maine Public Broadcasting $2.7 million a year?
Correct. That's a yearly cost.
Emergency signals and the appropriations.
Right, which is in state statute. And then $1.5 million is what the appropriations, so that's the gap that we make up with other dollars.
Thank you.
Correct. Senator Montina.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Huge fan of Maine Public Broadcasting. Love the Roosevelt Special and everything else. But I have a question about the broadcast here in the State House, and I guess I'm confused. On the second page, in your second paragraph, third sentence, it says, "But with a no vote, we were forced." Does that mean they actually took a vote and voted no?
Correct. The Legislative Council this past fall did a study. They had a broadcast subcommittee group and voted no to not prove any support during this time. And as it was explained to us, and that was really a timing question after the legislative session in anticipation of encumbering the new legislature with these new funds, so it was simply a matter of that. There was an official vote taken by the Legislative Council.
So there was an issue. What was the amount that was necessary? Because I've had a lot of constituents basically complain because once you give them a service and then you take it away from them. There's a lot of people that have been trying to log on to the website and to view debates and discussions.
Oh, we've heard from them as well.
Yes. So what is the amount that's needed?
The amount to fund MPBN's Maine Capital Connection is about $451,000.